Call to order the public hearing for fiscal year 2015 budget. Just a few budget highlights. The general fund operating budget is $614,550. The tax rate will be .2115 cents on the dollar per hundred of assessed value unchanged from fiscal year 2014. There is a slight increase in property tax, income tax, and town county revenue of $19,500. There is a decrease in the cell tower lease revenue. $68,000 in the clerk treasure and town manager salary were transferred to enterprise fund due to the fact that they do more work than what we had allotted in the enterprise fund. This includes a new computer and copier for the town hall. The trash and yard waste cost was increased a little bit. In the general fund capital, $66,000 funded from reserves for stormwater remediation, paving study, new mower, repairs to town hall. Under the enterprise fund operating budget, $874,100. Base charges increased by $6 usage, or I'm sorry, base charges increased by $6, usage increased by 6 percent. Sewer is $92 base and $6.62 per thousand gallons. Water has a base rate of $115 and 3.24 per thousand gallons, and most of that $115 goes towards the MDE loan for the wastewater treatment plant. Enterprise capital budget is $985,000, which includes pumping station upgrades through the USDA, water meter upgrades, main high street study for the streetscape program, and Tibbetts Lane sewer extension study. Counsel, you've done an outstanding job, and also I want to thank Donna for giving Frank the data and numbers that he needed, and Frank, thank you for all your hard work and time you put into, I think, an outstanding budget. Counsel, I give you a lot of credit because there was a tremendous amount of discussion. We met three, four times over this, and it was not easy decisions on some of these issues, but I think you did an outstanding job, so I commend you for that. I'll open up to the counsel for any comments. If not, I'll open up to the public. None? Okay. You did make a lot of comments during the meeting, so it wasn't like you didn't have anything to say. Yes, sir?
One question, clarification. The $68,000 for treasure and town manager, is that additional or is that the total?
No, that was additional. Or is that total? Oh, total now, okay. Total now. I stand corrected. Okay. Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none. I hear a motion to close the budget hearing for fiscal year 2015.
So moved.
We'll give Noel that one. Smith, a second.
I'll signal you next time.
We have a motion by Councilman Noel, seconded by Councilman Smith, to close the public hearing for fiscal year 2015 budget. All those in favor, sing fine and say aye. Those opposed, so carry. Now, we'll open the town council meeting for the town of New Windsor for May 7, 2014. If everyone would rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal with liberty and justice for
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda should have had it to the town hall by 3 o'clock on the last Wednesday of the previous month. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, we do have a sign-in sheet over here where our town manager is. Approval of minutes from the April 2, 2014 town council meetings, they have been emailed out by Donna on two separate occasions.
Make a motion we approve the minutes as... Second.
Wait until night.
Got to be a little faster.
Or no.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Paulsgrove, seconded by Councilman Huffman, to approve the minutes from the April 2, 2014 town council meeting. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, sing fine and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so carry. Reports, council committee reports, public works, Councilman Huffman.
Many residents took advantage of the first bulk trash day on April 26. Additional bulk trash days will be announced in the newsletter, so keep an eye on the newsletter for the date of that. And you also may have noticed that the town public works crew has been repairing potholes around the town, so be careful as you traverse the town during the day, and also if there's any areas that you see that require attention, feel free to call the town hall and make sure that they get taken care of.
All right. And yard waste is the first and third Tuesdays of every month.
Correct.
All righty. Any questions for Councilman Huffman? Thank you. Water and sewer, Councilman Paulsgrove.
We see that manager Shaffer once again has plenty of water and sewer-related issues to entertain us with, so we will defer to him.
And we'll ask questions for him then. All right. Public safety, Councilman Noel.
All right, I'll start with the planning commission. They did meet last month. Couple items. One is the 2013 planning annual report. This is required by statute for land use. We're fortunate here in Carroll County that the county puts this together for us. Otherwise, each town would have to do their own, and this is a pretty comprehensive document. So the commission's tasked with reviewing it, making sure our information is correct. At the next meeting, we'll, if everything's okay, we'll issue a letter to the council requesting approval of that. The planning commission also saw some sketch plans of a business that will be locating to the Tibbetts Lane Park, and I'll go let the mayor talk about that during his report, but I think it's some good news there. Public safety, Corporal Towson has another commitment tonight, so I'll go ahead and enter the public safety report. There was 110 incidents during the month of April. Corporal Towson was in a training class, two-day training class on residential commercial burglary. We did have a theft that occurred at the New Windsor School, New Windsor Middle School. It was an iPhone from a teacher. It results in his investigations. Two juveniles were identified and charged accordingly. There were 32 traffic citations issued during the month, and other than that, it was a relatively quiet month, so that's my report.
Any comments or questions for Councilman Noel?
I have a question.
Yes?
How does, I'm going to use the term crime, but how has it increased or decreased since we've had...
When we started the program, we were averaging over 200 calls for service a month. We've steadily declined, and we're now just over 100.
So it's improved?
It's improved, yes.
Thank you.
Economic development, Councilwoman Schultz.
Well, I can report that the New Windsor Economic Development Commission met for the first time on April 30. Unfortunately, because of my other job, my full-time job, I was not able to attend, so I'm going to let the mayor report on that. I guess we'll do that in your report.
Yes. And while we are under economic development, as Councilman Noel mentioned, we have some good news with a company coming into town. It's Hoover Incorporated. They sell farm equipment, basically Case International Harvester. This will be their 10th location. They have three locations in Pennsylvania, two in Delaware, two in Virginia, and two in Maryland right now, and it will be out on Tibbetts Lane. We're looking forward to that. I don't think we have a timeframe right now, but hopefully it will be very shortly. I think this is huge, knowing that we have a well-known company coming in to our community. Actually, Monday, I got a phone call from a well-known farmer wanting to know when they were going to open up, that he's one of their biggest customers, and he said if we needed anything from him, that he will be talking to the salesperson from Frederick to make sure that this happens as soon as possible.
This is DeVall from Frederick, that company.
Hoover, DeVall?
Right, yes.
Okay.
DeVall.
And, you know, we're excited about this. We have talked about expanding our sewer line out to Tibbetts Lane with a, what I call another anchor, along with... Universal Forest Products, thank you. You know, this will, I believe, entice other larger companies to come to New Windsor and expand their business, so we're real excited about that. They've been in Pennsylvania, they opened up in 1941, so they have quite a few years under their company, and we're looking forward to having them open up, and I'm sure we'll be bringing everybody up to date on that when that actually happens. But you'll be seeing some changes out there, I'm sure, with possibly painting of the building and having their name on the side of the building, and they'll possibly have a sign out front. And then, when you see farm equipment out front, combine, tractors, you can pretty well figure they're in business, so I think that's great news. Any questions for Councilwoman Schultz? Community enhancement, Councilman Smith?
We have narrowed down some of the selections for the upcoming summer concert series. I should be able to have some final picks over to Roma for the newsletter. We've also been contacted by several other entertainment performers that would like to do some things specific to, like a children's night, that would enhance that whole movie idea, so we're working on that to see if that could be fitting to the budget. So we would have the concert series per se, you know, on the dates that we usually have them, but then maybe on a Friday night, we can include some of these other things that will be specific to the younger folks in town. Also, I'd like to thank and commend the Lions Club and specifically Mayor Rup for this past May Day. If you didn't come out, you missed it. It was really nice, and it's extended out into the community. Mayor Rup had the idea to do a community-wide yard sale. There were some people down, some vendors down here, but a lot of them were in the communities, and just driving around, I had to work one Saturday, but I had the opportunity to drive around, and I think it went really well. Like to see that continue to grow. A lot of people came up to me down, when I was down there, and said that they thought it was real nice this year. Weather cooperated, obviously, so great job on that. And I think if we can continue along those lines, doing these little teeny tiny things that they can lead into bigger and better things, so stay tuned for the upcoming concert series and maybe possibly some of these things that we want to do for some of the younger folks in town, specific to them. That's it.
Any questions or comments for Councilman Smith? All right. Mayor's report. Busy month. Went to Media Media Center, which is taping tonight, to make a segment on Get Out the Vote. As you know, our primary is June 24. It's your right and civic duty to go out there and vote. My message, that I've mentioned before, is my opinion, and you can have your own opinion why it's important to vote, but to me, many Americans have served in the United States Armed Forces to protect and preserve our right to vote, and to me, it's a sign of respect to those that have served when you go out and vote. And for those that say that my one vote doesn't count, anyone that's lived in New Windsor for any extended period of time knows that we've had two tie votes, so that one vote would have made a difference here in town on two separate occasions, so... And with some of the positions, some of the offices not having a Democratic challenger, the primary is, I mean, yeah, the primary is almost a general election in some cases, so the primary is extremely important this year, more so than other years. And there's a saying in my segment, and that's terrible politicians get elected by good people not voting, so just a little something to remember. So get out and vote. We'll be bringing that up again in June, I'm sure. Frank and I attended a monoxie scenic riverboard stream cleanup meeting. There will be a stream cleanup on Saturday, May 17. I have another commitment, but it's open to the public if they want to come out and clean, clean up the stream. It'll be basically from like the middle school into town, cleaning up the stream. Went to, down in Crownsville, a community development block grant work session, and got some good information about that. Frank and I attended the county commissioners' mayor's meeting, which I will sort of defer a little bit of it to our town manager's report, but I will probably interrupt him when he mentions that meeting to explain my position on the importance of having Frank as our town manager. Frank and I attended a MEMA, snowstorm reimbursement workshop, and he'll mention a little bit about that. Meeting, Ron Seibel and I met the other Saturday with representatives from the AstroTurf Company that puts in the AstroTurf for Cal Repkin Senior Foundation Ballfields, and he came up from Atlanta. His daughter was playing in a soccer, or going to a soccer camp down University of Maryland, so while he was up in Maryland, he thought he'd come on up here, and instead of just looking at drawings, he got, we walked around the two lagoons, and so he could get a little better understanding of what we're trying to accomplish, so that was very helpful. Attended the Carroll County Developments Economic Outlook. Things are looking a little bit better in the state of Maryland and Carroll County. It's a slow process of getting back to where we once were, but things are looking a little bit better. Met with Steve Aquino and Vince Campanello. They are the co-chairs of the Economic Development Commission that I formed this past month, and I also met with the, most of the committee members. Not everyone was able to attend, but we're off to a good start. I had a lot of prior projects and a lot of ideas, and in the next probably June meeting, when they get together, we'll probably prioritize all of our projects. Frank and I attended a State Highway Administration kickoff meeting for Streetscape. That's the Safety Enhancement Program. And then I actually held another MEMA, snowstorm reimbursement, for the fire departments, and picked up even more information that allowed us to get some more money that we didn't think we were eligible for, so it was good to go to that meeting. Went to Senator Brinkley's post-session breakfast. Chauffeur Delegate Elliott up, and we got quite a bit of information there. And Volunteer Day slash beautification day in New Windsor, we had a few people show up. Councilman Huffman was there. Councilwoman Schultz was there. Donna was there. I was there. My wife was there.
Roma.
Roma. So our numbers weren't too big, but we got the parks looking a little bit better, and I talked to representatives from Comcast. They were in Tonti Town and Westminster with their volunteers, and when they do their scheduling next year, I think it's sometime in November when they do their scheduling for Volunteer Day, they're going to try to get New Windsor on their list, so hopefully we have a real good turnout next year. As Councilman Smith mentioned, community yard sale, I think, was a huge success. I know people think yard sales in town, you know, one man's junk is another man's treasure. Well, apparently, the people had a lot of treasures out there. We had, and I want to thank Roma and Ed for their help on this, and my wife Sina. Roma took a lot of information from people that didn't have email or internet access, I guess, and we had, I was shooting for 50 yard sales in conjunction with the Lions Club May Day event. I thought, you know, have a community-wide yard sale in town would bring more people in, and then have a little gimmick to get people to come down to the carnival grounds and support the Lions Club. I think it worked. I had a map, which I'll show a little bit later, because I want to recognize an individual with Carroll County government that did that map. But we had a map that I gave 10 copies to every yard sale. You were able to have, you saw all the yard sales on there. My goal was to have 50. We ended up with about 46 or 47 that signed up. However, there was others that just popped up without signing up, which is fine, so I'm sure we had over 50. In order to get people to come to town, we also had prizes, and we had gift certificates from Belissimo's, Uncle Matty's Eatery, and Lone Star Barbecue. And then we also had some items from Playground Specialist that built our playground over on Lampert Maple Avenue. So in order to get a raffle ticket, you had to go to every yard sale. Every yard sale, you were supposed to get one raffle ticket. You ended up with about 50 raffle tickets. You had to come down to the carnival grounds to put them into the barrel, so hopefully people stayed at the Lions Club May Day, spent some money, enjoyed the afternoon, whatever. Everybody I talked to said they did outstanding, got rid of a lot of treasures, and I heard the best comment was they had never seen so many people walking up and down the streets of New Windsor as they did Saturday. I heard that over and over and over, and I'm thinking, if we can have an event such as a yard sale, community-wide yard sale, to bring in that many people, when we have a bigger event, the possibilities are there to have a huge turnout. And from eight to two, a six-hour period, just rough estimates, and this may sound exaggeration, but I feel there was probably at least $10,000 brought into New Windsor just by yard sales. And if we can do that with yard sales, then I think that, I hope, shows, sends a message out to maybe other businesses that have a small shop who want to come to New Windsor, that we can bring people into town. It's not going to be a one-event thing that brings people back to New Windsor, but it's a start, so I want to thank everybody that participated in that, and everybody's looking for the second annual one next May, but we also are thinking of having one probably in the fall, so stay tuned on that. I don't know if anybody had any comments on that, but...
I just wanted to say that I heard from Uncle Matty that he was very busy, too, so he was happy to have all the traffic.
And I heard Belissimo's, they had a lot more walk-in traffic. Their carryout was down a little bit, but, and on the packet that I gave everybody with the maps and the raffle tickets, I had it on their little sticker, you know, if you don't feel like cooking after the yard sale, please support one of our eateries that supported you. So I think they benefited greatly from it. There was a lot of people that probably came to town for the first time. I know I talked to one person in town that had a yard sale, and it was that person's first time that they were in New Windsor, and they told them a little bit more about New Windsor, about some of the places to eat in here, so, you know, I think, I forget what the term was, but I made all the yard sale vendors ambassadors of New Windsor, so I think it was just a huge success, so...
Yep.
I know it seems like, you know, I'm going a little overboard on a yard sale, but this was huge in so many other ways, especially in the future, so... That's mine. Community deputy, I already talked about, no one from West Carroll Rec Council. Fire chief Tom Coe is on an important assignment. It's a pre-kindergarten meeting for his daughter, so he's unable to attend.
That is important.
But he did want to say that the carnival, which starts June 2 through the 7, and the parade is on the 4th at 7:00 PM sharp. We have, I think, one of the better parades around. Come to New Windsor, grab a crab cake, pizza, whatever, and watch the parade, and come throughout the week, of course. Town manager.
If you turn to tab five, you can follow along. The first item, I believe that the, at the work session, someone mentioned there might be a water leak up here on Main Street at Union Bridge Road, and sure enough, Jack checked it out, and there is a water leak. Because it's at the intersection of two state highways, we're having to work closely with them, we had to file for several permits, which we now have received just this week, and the staff are now speaking with the company, HTI, that does our utility repair, and as at this point, they'll be up there Monday or Tuesday making that repair. The, one thing we will want to do is, it's potential, let that block of houses between High Street and Union Bridge Road maybe shut off from water for a period of time during that repair, once we, once we get the pipe uncovered and find out where the actual leak is, but we can isolate that one block, so that might be happening, but, so that's a pretty significant leak. Fortunately, it's not coming to the surface, it's going through the storm drain and coming The water sewer base map study, GMV's completed their field work, State Highway has completed their field work, and we now have a data request into State Highway to get their survey information, and that'll allow GMV to finalize that portion of the survey, and then be able to move ahead into the actual, some of that street, Main Street and High Street scoping work that we need to do about finding out what we're going to have to do as part of the Streetscape, and that's why it's important. So the timing is, let me let those folks in. So there, that's good. Wrap up on snow, hopefully...
...on the meeting. So sorry, Aaron.
That's all right.
Just to wrap up on snow, I'm pretty sure we're not going to have another snowstorm. Our records indicate we spent $21,595 on snow, which I will tell you is more than we spent in the other three years I've been here combined. So, that's the upshot of that. We spent nearly $15,000 in salt, and $2,500 for our trunk throttle and fuel and supplies, and $4,200 in overtime, which gave us a total over-budget of $15,595. So that's the summary on that. But there is a little bit of good news, and news and the mayor referred to that. We had our meeting with FEMA and on the determination what our eligibility was for reimbursement, and the way it works is they allowed us to pick a 48-hour period, so we were able to pick from 9:00 PM on Tuesday evening, and our guys worked 24 hours straight through till 9:00 PM Wednesday, and they went home for six hours, and they came back and worked another stretch of about 12 hours from 3:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And what we were able to capture, all of that, because that fell within one 48 hours, so it really made a difference. The upshot of it is that they've identified $11,375 that were eligible to submit for reimbursement. Then our reimbursement rate is 75%, so if all that finally gets approved, we'll come back with about $8,500, so you take that off the 15.5 that we're budget, and that kind of cuts that in half, too. Something that's easier to swallow, $7,000.
And this, just to, not to interrupt you or Frank, but just to give everybody a little information, the governor has to ask for the state to be declared emergency situation, and Carroll, Baltimore, and Harrah Counties, were there any three counties that were in the declaration for reimbursement? And MEMA sponsored the meetings, but it's actually FEMA that comes out, meets with the town, and goes over what's eligible, what's not, so just a little update on that.
Now, for once, the good news kind of keeps coming. On April 17, and the mayor alluded to this, the county commissioners and the mayors of all eight municipalities agreed to the concept of a call-sharing arrangement for stormwater management remediation, and that really was the, that was the result of probably about a 10-month effort to piece that together, and numerous meetings with mayors and commissioners, and back and forth, and different ideas, and it came together, all came together that evening, and everyone has now signed off on that document, and so we have the framework of an agreement.
That's a, yeah, intent, not understanding.
Oh, yeah, memorandum of intent. I'm sorry, we had to change the name, memorandum of intent. Thank you, mayor.
So this isn't in concrete yet, but it's, like you said, it's a good start. So this isn't in concrete yet, but it's, like you said, it's a good start.
And so over the next several months, the Water Resources Coordinating Council, WRCC, county officials and municipal representatives will be developing the detailed operating agreement. And we've given ourselves till October 1st to work this out. So it seems like a long time, but our schedule, our first meeting, we broke this thing down into the pieces we need to work with. And if we do a piece a month, it's going to take us all the way to October to get it done. And hopefully, we won't hit too many bumps. But there's going to be a lot of work between now and then to get it done. Couple of significant portions of that, the county's going to pay 80% of the remediation costs for these projects, and the municipalities will be responsible for 20%. And the where and the how of how that's going to be paid and when, stuff like that, that's what we need to work, some of the stuff we need to work out in the operating agreement. And the other really important part of that is the county is going to continue to provide all the administrative support and inspection and things like that. And that's worth a couple of million and a half to $2 million a year that's in their budget that they're going to just pick up. And it's kind of like Councilman Knowles alluding to with the planning annual document. If each town had to pick that up and do it on their own, it would cost us way more individually than we could, it would just really be difficult to do, so...
And we won't have to have our own permit.
Yeah, we won't have to have our own permit. We'll be jointly permitted with the county, which, in a way, it sounds like that might be causing us to have more requirements, where it really doesn't. And any additional requirements that are in that permit, the county's actually already been doing already. So we're not going to see much of anything in terms of additional requirements placed on us. So that's the two big parts. Dollar-wise, whatever it means to us is, without the agreement, the town would have to come up with about $70,000 per year for the next five or six years. With the agreement, it's about $15,000. So that's a big difference. And that's the good news part of it.
This is where I interrupt you, Frank. Frank had mentioned the Water Resources Coordinating Council, or the WRCC. Frank didn't mention that he chairs that. Frank has an extensive background with Carroll County Government in this field to begin with. And Frank wasn't the only person that was responsible for this agreement with the county commissioners on behalf of the towns. But, you know, there was six other town managers, and along with Perry Jones, Mayor of Union Bridge, and county staff, Chief of Staff Powell, and Tom Devilbis worked this out. But, you know, I'm going to brag on you, Frank. You took the lead on this, and you know the ins and outs of it, where a lot of other people don't have that knowledge and that experience. And over a six-year period, your efforts, you know, I'm not going to give you 100% of the credit, but I'm giving you more than 51% of the credit that will save the town over six years $330,000 that the taxpayers don't have to eat. And $15,000 a year, hey, I'd rather not have to pay that, but for $15,000 to come up, that's, you know, not that it would come out of taxes, but that's a penny tax. So your efforts and your dedication, Frank, also should be commended for looking out for the town and other municipalities as well. So, great job, Frank. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll stop.
Now, you end on a negative note here.
Exit on high note, as you were going to say. Exit when you got them laughing. Councilman Hope Minori mentioned that we are doing some pothole repairs. It's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a learning thing. We haven't done this kind of, haven't had our crews do this kind of work for some time. There are several larger potholes on Maple and Hillside that I am going to have an outside contractor do, because it looks like they're going to require excavation below subgrade and things like that. And this work will be coordinated with the patch work we're going to have to do up here on Main and High, because that's on the state highway. They have an extensive patch requirement. And I've already talked to the contractor that I want him to do these potholes when he's doing that. And it turns out, we have a little issue developing on Maple, right between two of the bigger potholes. And we're going to end up tearing that street up to fix this water leak anyhow. So we'll just fix all that in one big fell swoop. But we're going to concentrate on the smaller ones that our guys can handle with the equipment that we have. But we will get those bigger ones. And if anyone has a pothole around town, I encourage them to give us a call, because we don't see everyone the way you do, when your car bounces over it twice a day. Bulk trash day, that was also mentioned. It was slightly down. We only got two dumpsters filled, which is usually three. And when I did the report, I didn't have the tonnage figures. I did get those today. It was about five tons' worth of bulk trash that we took out. So that was a little less. I'm not sure why that was, but usually we get three dumpsters.
People sold the stuff at yard sales.
Maybe they were selling it at the yard sale. We mentioned yard waste. I would ask that folks try to have their yard waste out by 7:00 AM, because we do start picking up by 7:30 or 8 o'clock. And we do occasionally miss somebody, so just, you know, give us a call. You know, we'll come back. It's not that much trouble. But try and get it out early so that we can get it on the first go-through. Reminder that yard waste must be either in the paper bags that you see or in containers that can be dumped. We ask if you're going to do that, make them less than 40 pounds, so guys can pick them up. Limbs need to be less than four inches in diameter and four foot in length. And residents always have the opportunity to take stuff down to the dumpsters at the Gear Road Shop. If you just flip one more page, I decided to stick this in, wanted to show you what our recycling was looking like. And we've been consistently getting about 33% recycling. So if you take our, and this is really just on the household trash cycle. If you take the amount that goes into trash and the amount that's in recycling, and you worked it out, we are recycling about a third of our waste stream. So that's pretty good. It's a little more than you normally see. And when you consider some of the other things that aren't showing up here, we don't track tonnage of metal or like white goods or batteries and things like that that do get recycled, but we don't actively track those. I think our folks are doing much better than the average on our recycling. So they'll be commended for that. If you have any questions on any of this or any of the other...
Recycling saves us money, because we don't pay for that in the same way as regular trash, right?
Yeah, there's no tipping fee for recycling. Right.
There's a tonnage fee, but not a tipping fee, isn't that how it works?
No, there's no, the recyclables, we don't, there's no charge to take recyclables to the landfill. So every ton that we can switch from trash to recycling saves us $62.
So that's for all of you out there. I walk every morning, and I notice a lot of people don't recycle. So, you know, that's money back into our pockets as a town when we recycle, so.
When you consider that the trash hauling is the single largest line item in our budget. So, you know, and that's pretty common in small towns, that that's one of the biggest light items that you have. So any ton of trash we can get to recycling saves us $62.
Any questions for Town Manager Frank Schaefer? All right. Donna, Treasury Report.
Good evening, everyone. If you want to turn to page six, your report, of course, goes into a little more detail. I'll just give you the totals. So, general fund expenses for April were at $49,054.41. We had deposits of $16,426.70. And we have a balance right now on the general fund of $165,772.41. That was at the end of April. Then on our enterprise fund side, we had expenses of $38,302.96, deposits of $101,106.63. You can tell it was water billing time. And I also transferred $60,000 to our capital reserve, our three Rs, and fund, leaving us a balance of $58,162.68. And considering we are three-quarters of a way through our budget year, we're in good shape.
Good.
Any questions?
Okay. Any resident's concerns over there, Frank? Anybody didn't sign up, want to speak? Okay. Old business, Town Charter Amendments update.
I gave you all a very short memo today, which has already been commented on over here. Because I will, my notes were a little scattered, because our conversation was a little scattered. And I wasn't exactly sure where we landed on the one particular issue of councilman removal. So I think that has now been adequately explained to me by Councilwoman Schultz, and I will make that change. We also talked a little bit about the salary language. And rather than do all sorts of finagling with that, I came up with that proposed sentence that I think will solve the problem of, everybody gets the same rate per meeting, and if you come to all the meetings, you all get the same amount, and if you miss a meeting, you don't get the same amount. But I think that that change would alleviate the concern that Councilwoman Pauls Grove had. So I'm going to fix the first part of this again and send it to you. And I'm thinking that what we should be able to do, barring anything unforeseen, is take one more quick spin on this, emphasis on the quick, I hope, at the work session. Now, I really think we've covered everything that we need to here, whatever the final language is, at the work session. And then we can introduce and adopt these changes in the June meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
Sounds good.
So discuss what we need to do. Introduce it, do you mean?
Yeah, you can introduce, it's a resolution, so you can introduce and vote on it at the same time if you want to. You don't have to, but, yeah, but by the time, you know, we will have discussed it pretty much at...
Work session.
At work sessions. So that's what that's about.
Any other old business? New business, fiscal year 2015 budget adoption. We've had the hearing. We've had plenty of time to discuss it over the last two months, several meetings. Do I hear a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2015 budget for the town of New Windsor?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Smith to adopt the fiscal year 2015 budget for the town of New Windsor, seconded by Councilwoman Schultz. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, seeing if anybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Recognitions, we were not able to attend the last Maryland Municipal League chapter meeting, which is held with Frederick County. Usually it's held in June, but they held it early this year. I'm not sure why. But unfortunately, it was the same night as our scheduled work session, so we were unable to attend. However, two of our legislators, Senator Brinkley and Delegate Elliott, were recognized by the Maryland Municipal League. Maryland Municipal League, for those that don't know, or MML, represents all 157 municipalities in the state of Maryland. We are part of the Maryland Municipal League, and we are part of the Carroll County Chapter. At this time, I'd just like to read the latest Maryland Municipal League magazine that they had. And their 2014 legislative review, they recognized several bills that were passed and become effective, most of them either July of this year or October 1st of this year. One was legislation introduced by the Maryland Department of Planning, House Bill 510, to reauthorize the Sustainable Communities Tax Credit Program, which hopefully, we will be able to participate in, mainly with Deelman Inn. The, under House Bill 11, monies from the Bay Restoration Fund may now be used by local governments. House Bill 827 would have required a municipality to submit copies of its campaign financial reports to the State Board of Elections. Another one was House Bill 950, to make property taxes due on the date of transfer of property rather than on the first day of the next fiscal year. And there's a couple others in here. But the one I want to read is Delegate Don Elliott, Carroll County, Republican, was successful this year in passing legislation, House Bill 937, to require the Maryland Department of the Environment ensure that monies from the Water Quality Fund, the Bay Restoration Fund, the Biological Nutrient Removal Program, and Supplemental Assistance Program be fairly and equity or equitably distributed among wastewater treatment facilities with a design capacity of less than 500,000 gallons per day. This legislation takes effect on July 1st, 2014. Now, this is after four or five years of New Windsor trying to get funding for our wastewater treatment plant. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But this allows small municipalities across the state, which we were pretty much the leader in, we were the first state or first municipality to really have to upgrade our wastewater treatment plant to the new process. And with Delegate's help, we have received two supplemental grants. One was for $550,000, and the other one, as everyone is well aware, two years ago, we received $2 million grant through the state of Maryland. And now, you know, this may not help us. We may still see why not we can apply come July 1st. We're going to do everything we can. The worst they can say is, no, you already received funding through supplemental grants. But until they tell us no, we're going to go forward with getting, at least applying for additional funding through supplemental grants. Another one, the Maryland Municipal League recognized several senators and delegates for 2014 as the outstanding friend of municipal government. And two other recipients were our Senator David Brinkley and, again, Delegate Don B. Elliott. And I just want to read this. "An outstanding friend of municipal government is a legislator who strongly and consistently supports his or her municipalities and works closely with MML on legislation impacting cities and towns throughout the General Assembly Session. Award recipients often speak on the House or Senate floor in support of municipal government and consult frequently with MML staff and membership to discuss the impact of legislation on Maryland cities and towns. They are in frequent contact with league representatives, and their doors are always open to discuss an issue that may positively or negatively impact Maryland's cities and towns. During the 2014 General Assembly Session, the individuals listed below went over and above on behalf of municipal government in Maryland by introducing legislation that specifically benefited their municipalities or municipalities in general. Many of these individuals also advocated for amendments to bills or monitored the state budget process to ensure that municipalities were treated fairly and equitably. We congratulate them and thank them for their strong and consistent support of the Maryland Municipal League and our elected and appointed municipal officials throughout the state." At this time, Senator Brinkley was unable to be here tonight. He has another commitment. He's actually on the campaign trail, so he had a commitment over in Frederick County. However, at this time, I would like to call up Delegate Don B. Elliott to receive a plaque. And unfortunately, we weren't able to be at the MML chapter meeting, but Delegate Don B. Elliott is recognized as an outstanding friend of the town of New Windsor to acknowledge exceptional effort and dedication on behalf of citizens of New Windsor. exceptional effort and dedication on behalf of citizens of New Windsor, May 7, 2014.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. A few words?
Yes, I just want to say this. You know, we all started here with New Windsor. And it was the mayor that brought it to our attention, that there was an issue here that we had 40 million dollar debt that was placed on the town for an upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant. And 525 people paid the bill. And what it did, obviously as you know, a lot of people had cut off their bills and it just seemed rather unfair. But what we found out is that, and we worked at this for I guess almost two years with the Department of Energy. And the most that they would do for us is just to forgive the interest on the $500,000, $500,000, $500,000 dollars. That's all they would do. So I brought this to the attention of the Chairman of the Environmental Matters Committee and she was very much wanted to help us because she saw where we were coming from. But I don't think at that time even she realized what was going on here. And the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Fund, the whole purpose of the fund was for wastewater treatment plants and upgrades of those plants. As the bill was written, the bill said though, back in 2004, that the priority was to be given to larger, major wastewater treatment plants. And those were defined as those of having 500,000 gallons of pollution processed every day. And New Windsor was 94,000. So they weren't going to give any money there. But it did say prioritize. It didn't say that they would give any money, but they weren't. So anyway, we very good debt, as the mayor pointed out to you, some monies to the town. And I thank the Chairman of the Environmental Matters Committee of facilitating that for us. And so, but then the issue was not just New Windsor. The issue was, look, there's other jurisdictions out there, there's other municipalities out there that are small municipalities and they're not getting any money either. So that was the purpose and the genesis of this bill that we put in this past year. And by the way, it was signed just yesterday by the governor. So it's going to go into effect. And what it simply says, as was read by the mayor, he wrote, it simply says that there's got to be an equitable distribution of these funds to both the major and minor quays and the payment finances. And that's one of the fairest ways to go with that scheme. And something I didn't realize, while we were pushing this bill through, is that the MML indicated that two-thirds of the jurisdictions, two-thirds of the 150 municipalities would benefit from this basic legislation. And I think that's something I didn't realize, you know, the impact that it might truly have. So I'm very pleased to have done this and I thank the mayor, the council, and all for having promoted this issue because without them having brought this to my attention, we wouldn't have seen this bill this year either. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, you may have read in the Carroll County Times on April 3rd, Thursday, April 3rd. And if you see a real proud councilman, I'll tell you why. His daughter was recognized for, I'll just say, FSK Public Relations Intern, helped promote school activities. And go online to Carroll County Times and do a search for Huffman or Michaela Huffman and you'll see a real great article. I guess about two years ago, I start recognizing our citizens when they do something outstanding and you know, make us proud that you're from New Windsor and this is a prime example. So Michaela, if you would come up forward here.
My mom.
Michaela, recognition by the mayor, town council, and citizens of New Windsor, Michaela Huffman for outstanding achievements as an in-school public relations intern at Francis Scott Key High School, presented on May 7, 2014. Congratulations. And I could probably explain it to some degree. I know you do a lot of writing for publicity of the events that are going on over at Key, but I know it's helped you personally, but I'm sure it's helped the events that are going on at Key to get a little bit more mention. So if you'd like to have a few words about what the internship has meant to you and what it is?
Okay. Well, first off, thank you for my recognition. My internship falls right in line with what I want to do in the future. I aspire to be a well-known author and I figured this internship was the perfect way to broaden my writing style and abilities. I love my town, I love my community, I think FSK is a great place for education, and it was truly an honor and a privilege to be able to promote them during my senior year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And if anybody else knows of any other citizens that can be recognized for outstanding events and accomplishments here in New Windsor, greatly appreciate it. There is one other that I would like to recognize, even though he's not a citizen of New Windsor, but he's an employee with Carroll County Government. And I don't know if anybody has seen the map of the yard sales. He did an outstanding job and this is Michael Roberts with Planning and Land Management?
Development.
Development. And in the GIS department. And I let his boss, Tom Delvis, know, you know, this is Carroll County Government working with our town to make our town a little bit better. And you know, he color-coded the yard sale stars with the addresses over here and the little checklist, visit it, you can put a little X. And this was the hit of the town. It may seem, you know, minor, but everybody loved it. And I will recognize Mike before the county commissioners at a later date. So you know, he's willing to do it again. He says next time, but there were some issues which, you know, always, you know, seems like it happens the first time, but now that he has all that, it really wasn't his issues. It was the printer at the county office building that went up and it went up on Thursday and I needed the maps for Saturday and the guy came and fixed it. So it all worked out, but he says, you know, if we add names to it, it will take him probably less than a half hour to do the map again. So just to let you know that Carroll County Government is out there willing to help municipalities in events like this. So you know, I'm not sure if anybody knows Mike Roberts, but I think he needs to be recognized for a job well done. Any other new business? I'll get you, get everybody more information, but just kind of bring this out in the open. The Dealmen Inn property, I have no idea on the open lot whether there's any historical treasures there, but the students at New Windsor Middle School, I've invited to do a dig there. If no one has any objections, it'll be in the side yard, it won't be around the building, just to give them some exposure to doing a dig, archaeological dig there. And they may come up with something, who knows what, but they've come up with, down to Spring House, some valuable historical things down there. So let them, and I told them, you know, if progress comes about next year that they may have to stop because of construction around Dealmen Inn, they understand that. So I think they want to start on May 17th. So if nobody has any objections?
Yep.
All right. No other new business, I think? All right. Announcements, Farming's Carnival, June 2nd through the 7th. Parade again, June 4th. Next meeting will be, because June 4th is our first Wednesday of the month, we will have our next town council meeting on Wednesday, June 11th. And that is here, correct? Not very sure. But I think Roma said this, we have this for June 11th. Any other announcements? Yes?
Do you have any information on Memorial Day activities?
Thank you. Is May 26?
It's Sunday, right?
We're shooting for 5 o'clock at Presbyterian Church. We're going to have a reenactment.
25th.
25th, okay. Sunday 25th, thanks. It's the last Sunday of the month, I'll put it that way. At Presbyterian Church, we have a local historian, well-known citizen, well-known businessman, Dan Hartzler, who is portraying one of the reenactors that raided the town of New Windsor. And I believe Frank Badavich, who usually puts the script together, he is going to reenact as well. So we will be putting an article in the Carroll County Times as well, so stay tuned for that. But probably be 5 o'clock at Presbyterian Church. So come out and support the town for Memorial Day. We do, we are reenacting, reenacting the 100, or celebrating the 150th anniversary of the raid, of the Confederate raid on New Windsor. However, we will also be recognizing and honoring those men and women that have served in our country, in the United States Armed Forces as well. So please come out, do a good evening here in New Windsor. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other announcements? Appreciate you coming out. Stay involved. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor, sing fine by saying aye.
Aye.
So carry.
Okay. Got a list here.